A little bit abstract, sorry. So we'll go ahead and start the meeting with what?
I just to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very first item is that this is a public hearing. Um, for ordinance 11 dash 2023, the budget for 2024. And it's time for public comment. Don't see any. So what clause is that? Now, we'll open the regular meeting. And first item visits is I need a motion to approve minutes submitted for August 7th, regular meeting and workshop in August 1st.
Move to approve second.
The move is seconded that we approved minutes as submitted for regular meeting on August 7th, workshop on August 7th, and workshop session on August 1st. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Manthers.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. In my letter of introduction to Chris, I indicated I grew up in Hagerstown, moved to Florida, spent 50 years. And as a writer, I was doing history columns in Florida. And I said, wait a minute. I'm missing something in my hometown. And I started thinking about the Teeter family. And I know his daughter did a biography of her father. But in the book that I've got coming out next spring and the handouts I have to you tonight, the book is going to be on Ralph Teeter and the cruise control, which was manufactured by women, very progressive. And the town featured in my book, I talk about how you were in the national headlines a year ago. And I see the commemoration, if I can see the word. Hagerstown was in the national headlines, but in the 50s, Hagerstown was in the national headlines. And you can see the team in the second handout was greeted in the governor's office. But my book, the next, the third handout, Ralph Teeter had probably 30 or more patents. One was a pistol grip fishing pole. But I concentrated on his work for the speeda stat. But there was a delay, and it was in 1955 when there was a strike by the Perfect Circle employees. That lasted 18 weeks and involved all four plants. And you can see in your handout, at one point, they brought in two Sherman tanks at the Newcastle plant to keep low water. So it was, to say the least, a wild time in the town's history at that point. But things moved on, and in 1957, the speeda stat was unveiled. Uh, the hound that you see, the fifth handout is Bob Beeson in a photo shoot. And he was the chief photographer of Perfect Circle. The speeda stat was unveiled, the schematic, I show you in 1957 as it was coming out. Uh, one of the handouts is Robert Marie, who was inspecting a speeda stat that was installed in a Studebaker sports coupe in 1964. And I show you some of his test logs. He and some of the engineers took the Studebaker sports coupe all the way to Colorado Springs, testing it out. And as I said, it was made by women, and it was inspected by women. And at one point, the PC airport, it was originally Perfect Circle Field owned by Herman Teeter. They brought in the reporters from Detroit and New York on the Perfect Circle aircraft. They brought them in here on Washington Street. And the cars were lined up outside the plant with the hoods up so the reporters could see the speeda stat. 1957 was a very big year for Hagerstown. And you see the New York Times announcing the speeda stat with Ralph Teeter in the photograph. In the book, I talk about the Hagerstown I remember in the 70s. Abbott's Candy, Vola's Smores Club, and all of these businesses tied in directly with the Teeter family. And I think it gives flavor to the community. I talk about the two Hagerstowns, and I appreciate attending the banquet when the two towns were here. You both have a canal, water history. And, but I think Hagerstown has a very unique history that's not been told. I found it in your museum, in your library, and believe it or not, half the book was written by the power of the internet in Florida. But then there was a point where I had reached a stumbling block. So I'd made three trips to Indiana to go through your museum. And every time I go up those steps, it gets harder and harder. So I'm glad I got my research done. I don't know how many more times I can go up those steps. In the book, we talk about the Teeter mansions. Ralph's mansion was built in the mid 30s. And one of the things that you can see, there's a handout of a large wooden remote that Ralph had made. It would tune in all the original radio stations. The door chimes and the, uh, in-home communications he had among people. And it amazed me, I visited with his grandson in Indianapolis. You go to his home down in the basement, there is all of the things about Mr. Teeter. I could not do justice going through all of it. But I looked at the cruise control drawer and found all sorts of information. Just, it needs to come out, that's what I'm trying to do with my book. I wanted to introduce it here first with the town council. You still have a lasting legacy with Mr. Teeter. The library, the airport, the country club. As I look at your streetlights, they go back to the early 1900s when the town purchased the electric utility from the light inspection car company for $3,500. To offset the cost, they charged the town, each person got a $1 electric bill that pay off that. And so it's amazing how much legacy is left in the community. And especially all of this that I have found, it doesn't need to be in folders and files. It needs to be exhibited, and that's what I'm trying to do. I do plan to come back next year when the book is out and have a book signing. But I wanted to bring it forward first, and thank you for this opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Gary.
Heart of Hagerstown, uh, not a lot going on in our group. Um, hometown Christmas will be held on December 2nd. That's the first Saturday there in December. We've had a couple expressed, and a couple people expressed interest in resurrecting a fall festival. Uh, that's all kind of come about in the last week. So we haven't really got much traction there yet. Uh, but they may have some interest in resurrecting a fall event in Hagerstown. On Wednesday, the 13th, which is our Heart of Hagerstown meeting, we've invited all the downtown businesses and members, businesses throughout Hagerstown zip code uh, and civic groups to come to that meeting. And we'll talk to them a little bit about the eclipse and how they can become involved and kind of what we have planned. And where we see voids and holes filled in and where the business community can start to step in. And then on the 14th, we'll be hosting a community meeting for the eclipse at the meeting place. All community members invited to that to hear about the eclipse planning so far.
Thursday?
I think seven, right?
Yes, yep, seven, Dan, on the 14th.
So again.
That's it.
Do you have any questions for Gary? I have some council action to take care of. There are three accounts that we need to issue super credits to. It was in the Ministry of Air, and there are three accounts for 1.1291.01 for $88. Second account is 2.07600.00 for 49, $40.95. And the third one is for 2.07600.95 for $22.60. And I need a motion to allow that.
I'm going to approve all three credits as presented second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the three discounts as discussed. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, wage and salary.
So we had a new agreement with the school. Um, so we needed to change SRO wages. And that's effective August 5th. They are... That'll be 70192. So I need introduction and then this is...
Okay, I need a motion to suspend rules to introduce and adopt ordinance in one meeting.
So moved second.
The move is seconded that we suspend the rules to introduce and adopt ordinance in one meeting. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance 10 dash 2024. 23, sorry.
I'm going to adopt ordinance 10 dash 2023 as written, second.
The move is evident that we adopt ordinance 10 dash 2023 as submitted. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Julie, you want to introduce the budget ordinance?
Yeah, so someone needs to introduce the budget ordinance 11 dash 2023. And then the next council need to all approve it.
We have to introduce budget for 2024, ordinance number 12 dash 2023. Second.
Yeah, we can only introduce. All of the... Yeah, it's been moved that we introduce the 2024 budget ordinance 11 dash 2023. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we need to establish an account for our Oakbrook funds. Ordinance 12 dash 2023 for our Oakbrook grant. We need to establish funds so we can receive the money. Okay, I would request a motion to suspend rules.
I'm going to move to suspend the rules, do it out. Second.
We moved and seconded that we suspend the rules to grant an adoption and introduction in one night. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion.
All of them to approve ordinance number 12 dash 2023 for the Oakbrook grant fund. Second.
The move is seconded that we pass ordinance 11, 12 dash 2025. Great, all of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We skip over to the aim medical.
We got it, so. Becky, we have the aim medical, the aim medical, um, you guys need to approve that. Right here. Cause they raised the rate, remember, we need to approve it.
Well, I thought you wouldn't want to do that.
Oh, okay.
That was my thought.
Okay. You want me to do it right now, or?
You want to wait till your time later, or you want to do that?
We can just do it right now. Um, for the 2020, 2024 year, they've raised our medical, Mr. Medical is 7.1%. And I need the council to approve that. Um, dental and vision has stayed the same for next year.
Can we remember what last, the last rate was?
It was like five, this is the highest, the federal 5% was.
Yeah.
One year it went down, and then one year it was like 2%. But I think we are going to look at maybe trying to go somewhere else. But right now, we have to...
Move that we accept the renewal rates for any type of trust per count points as presented. Second.
Move that's evident that we renew our, have insurance with aim, all of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we need to, um... Have you both seen the building commissioner ordinance? We've got it. We take a look at it quick, please.
Becky, Becky. He said that, Adam said that was the same as that we passed beginning of the year.
What I'm not with, it's good.
Yeah, so we don't have to do it.
No.
No action needed on this one?
Right.
So it's no amendment, it's just the same.
Okay, need a motion to suspend the rules.
Uh, we don't, Adam said that what we did last year, or not last year, beginning of the year, it covers what you were asking in that ordinance. So we don't have to...
But we haven't passed it.
We did back, yeah, we did back in April.
This version?
Yes.
Okay.
Approved with amendments, was it? Was that the wording on it, approved with amendments?
Adam said it was okay, I don't know, so I don't know.
Well, when we had our meeting, you know, I had a version, he had a version. This is the version he had, this is what we should adopt. But, or should have adopted, I guess.
Is it different than what?
It's a different one I had last week. This is what he said. And the, the two issues were correct.
So do we need to do anything with that since there's some confusion?
We can call that.
Both of you have already passed one, but you're saying it's different.
Right.
What, you know what the differences were?
The differences are that the building commissioners have to be an at-will employee. And that...
And that's different from what we passed?
It's, we, um... And that he has to attend all planning and DZA meetings. And planning will take care of if it's being done in the correct manner. And I wish we planned a paragraph.
That's how things began.
I really can't find that.
Well, we have a work session next Tuesday. We can get clarification and...
I can fill that in.
Okay. Yeah, me too, because I...
So Adam should read past this.
Um, we can ask him and then Tuesday at our...
Okay, well, we really need to do this tonight. Um, I, I don't feel more comfortable doing it, doing it for, what's changed? I don't have the...
I don't understand what you're wanting us to do. I, I'm not going to vote on that until I see the differences from the one we already passed and get clarification. And we don't have that in front of us to look at.
Oh, I wish I would have kept the old one. It was, um...
Yeah, I guess that's probably what I'm... Yes.
The difference was who supervises. Before, it was the town manager, and we removed that responsibility from him. Meaning he has enough to do.
Is there, is there, is there an urgency to pass?
He does have to report to planning commission.
Is there an urgency to pass it today? If so, if what is the urgency, pass it today versus waiting till next Tuesday for clarification?
Um, because we need to introduce or get planning commission's recommendation as to who we hire, but we can't hire somebody for a position that doesn't exist. It exists, but not the way it exists.
Do we have somebody that they're wanting to recommend? And they want to come on board before Tuesday or before the work session?
No, he, he will be introduced and then on Tuesday, executive session, we will interview and discuss. Okay? You got that?
I got it, I'm still not voting on it until I see the two, so I see the two ordinances side by side for clarification.
Okay, this is the original. That's what we have now.
We approve the original ordinance, ordinance number four, 2023 in the April meeting. We did what? We approved the ordinance to revise chapter 158 Building Commissioner title 15 Land uses of Town Code. Town Hagerstown. We've approved it already. And now we're reapproving it? So I guess that's what I'm asking. Yes, looks to be the same.
It's the exact same?
Briefly, we've already asked, it's the same. Give a look at it.
The biggest changes on the first page.
It's here on the first page. I would say Alan's saying a difference from what's here, that was on the paper.
I can call that. We're ready?
There's no changes in it, Becky?
Well, yeah, well...
From what you showed me to what's on that paper, there's no, no changes.
C, A, B, C, D. D is missing. A, B, and C. There is no D.
And this is the one we approved?
That's... This, this was a draft.
Well, Alan has on the minutes that we approved it already.
Well, we could have. I don't attend every meeting.
I think it's already been dubbed, correct?
Right.
And it's already...
Well, it's a midpoint.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Director.
All right, I'm Chris Sanova, president of the planning commission. And, uh, we're, I'm just here to represent them and to recommend Terry Ford as the best candidate for the new, for the building commissioner's job. Uh, he is a local Richmond guy, he's, he's a licensed electrician. He's worked in a lot of different areas of, uh, construction and that type of thing. And we met with him, uh, last month, he was here. And he just seemed like he would be a real good fit for it. And he worked with Bob Warner, he worked here in Hagerstown for... He worked here at Hagerstown for two years as an electrician, '08 and '09. So he worked for Bob Warner. So Bob knows him real well and Bob has recommended him, was highly recommending him as well, so.
What was his name?
Terry Ford.
How many candidates did you interview?
This is the only guy that applied. And really quite qualified for, you know, for what we need.
He's eminently qualified.
Yeah, he knows all the codes.
Worked in the middle for a bit too in their inspection.
I think Chris's partner got plenty of resonations from him that you guys could read all about what he's done.
So that's what we'll do Tuesday is take, take his recommendation. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, EDC will not have a report because they're not here. Brian's chamber, he's not here. Parker Recorditions, he's not there. Police Department.
Yes, a few things. First of all, you know, we got a grant to replace our portable radios to bring us in compliance with upcoming changes with the radio system. That grant paid for the purchase of the 10 portables. But we were unable to get enough money through the grant to purchase mobiles for our vehicles. So I've got a quote from Motorola for the cost of the mobiles. And I would like to ask council if we could use money from the ARP COVID money towards that. That quote was $21,934.05. With us getting those mobiles, that will secure our communication with the upgrades. And, you know, with the officers beside the vehicles and the radios, that's our two biggest pieces of equipment. And our radios are lifelines. So our initial plan was we were going to try to just survive off of our portables until we were able to, to get the funding for the mobiles. But for officer safety, I would prefer if able to spend the money now from that account, go ahead and purchase those so that I know the officers will be connected to the dispatch center, which is vital for them. So I would ask if possible to use the funding from that account to purchase those. I have the quote here if you guys would like to look over that.
How much did you say they were?
The total for everything was $21,934.05. That will be for the five mobiles, which will go into the five full-time officer vehicles.
Do we have any of that in there now?
We, we do, but when we go to the they're going to be obsolete. That's the reason also for the change in the portables as well. I do believe that there's, if, for example, a fire department needs any of these mobiles, they could use them. If not, there might be a market out there to sell some of those, you know, to some other agencies if we have left over. Because not all the counties are going to be changing the radio system as we are. So they would still be usable for some other departments if we can't find an in-house use for them.
I will say, based on, you know, where we are, the rulelessness of our, our department, you know, our portables can only go so far. The mobiles have the ability tied in with the vehicles to boost that signal. So I very much am in favor of this because of the way for, especially for safety in our little area.
Those, those are going to be updatable too.
Correct.
So as time goes forward, you should be able to update those.
Yes, they're a couple of models above even like what RPD is going to right now. So we're being told that everything they're envisioning doing within the radio system for several years out, these will be compatible. They're going to be pretty much like the most current versions that we could get right now. So.
Speaking from experience, using your portable radio while driving a vehicle is not safe.
Correct, correct.
For several years.
You know, my time at Muncie, we did that a lot and I, I would agree. But at the time when I was trying to find the money for one of the portables, that time was more valuable if I had to choose between the two. But obviously, if we could get these mobiles, then we, you know, we would be, officer safety would be covered in both areas.
My findings there, correct?
Yes. Do you want to call it a communication system or just a radio system?
It's part, I guess it's our radio system since that's how we did the portables as well, was under portable radios. So these are just the mobile radios. So they're installed in the vehicles.
This year's budget, next year's budget?
Well, it would be out of the current, the.
2023? It would be out of the ARP money?
Yes.
That's what he's asking. And it's below $50,000? And is that what, we really don't have to? Say, go ahead.
Well, it's not coming out of my budget. That's why I'm asking.
Where, where's it coming from?
From the.
Okay, it's still fine.
The ARP money.
Yeah, I just got a big thing from them. You've got to spend your money by the end of the year, 2024. No, okay. That's all we got.
Couple other things. Jubilee Day went really well. We had no issues with anything associated with it, even the beer garden concert, concerts, everything. We, we had no issues. I felt like it was one of the biggest crowds I've seen in several years for the actual parade. For the police department side, I'd like to thank the town utilities, the street department for everything that they do to assist us with road closures, et cetera. Lions Club does a great job and I think we're really going to miss Robin and Ed when they step away. I feel a big reason that event is successful is because of all the hard work they put in behind the scenes. So hopefully, there are some other people in the community that will step up and kind of pick up where they left off. Also, I had mentioned that we got the $4,000 grant from the Drug Free Wayne County. We actually got that. That check presented to us last week. So we did get the funds for that. And then last this Sunday is our first golf tournament that police department is hosting out of Hartley Hills as a fundraiser for the K-9 program. We've had great support, not only from our local businesses, but with people within the community. We're only a three, about three teams short of being completely filled with that. So hopefully, the day of will get one or two teams show up. So I expect that to be a great success as well. And then I'll kind of update you on how that turned out at the next meeting.
I hope that the opioid funds.
Yes, I'll tell you, I had met with the resource officers. We're kind of, our plan is we're looking for the elementary. We're kind of, we're looking at some different organizations that we can get like workbooks with. We feel like in elementary, what we want to do is do an in-class presentation per class. And, and then actually Julie Neal come up with a great idea that we liked as well for the high school. Is we're, we're kind of shopping around to find like a speaker that we could have come in and do a presentation to the entire school. Kind of with maybe a backdrop of someone who's kind of been through that lifestyle and the things, you know, they done to, to get out of it and also help put that information out to the high school kids as far as things that maybe they need to avoid, et cetera, that they maybe went through. We just felt like the presentation like that would be more beneficial than, you know, doing something like at the elementary. So we're currently trying to identify a speaker for that. If anybody has any ideas, feel free to please send that my way. And then we're looking over a couple of different vendors that have some different items as far as for the elementary. And then that's probably the route we're going to go. And then we'll set up the schedule to go through the school with that. So that's kind of where we're at right now for our plan for this year as far as on the education part of it.
So Becky, so if you're going to use the ARPA money, there needs to be a motion. They want to spend, probably yes. Like we approved what? Yeah. Where it's coming from. Right. So a new motion that says we will use ARPA funds for the radio system.
I'm going to approve the invoice from HPD for $21,934 for radio system come out of the ARPA fund. Second?
We can second it that we allow $21,934.05 for radio system bought by Hagerstown Police Department from ARPA funds, all those and there.
I agree.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
It was Jubilee Day and everything, August was a busy month for us. I do want to echo these comments about Jubilee Days. I thought it was the best with that in quite a while. And I should add, there's not enough things that goes around to all the people involved to help put this on. You know, utility crew, town hall volunteers, you know, Lions Club. So I mean, it's just, I think it's a thankless job that these guys do. So, but they did an outstanding job this year and hopefully it can continue to be that way. We had, last week we did our first fundraiser as a department. I thought it went quite well. We did a new drive at 138 and we stood out there for about four and a half hours. And at the end, we would have stayed out longer, but it started getting hot. The sun was beating down on us. So I thought we, we did quite well. I turned money over to Julie. We raised a little $2,000 at that time. I think if we had stayed out a little bit longer, we might have been able to double that, that, that thing. So the money will go into donation account. I turned over to Julie this afternoon. So it's deposited in our donation account. We had a total of 20 runs for the month, which is up by a couple of runs from last month. But year-to-date, we're still down compared to this time last year. So I do want to, you know, let you know that the recovery works out there. We've been out there 18 times so far this year. So, and I don't see that getting any better. We are still down one member. So if anybody out there wants to be a member of the fire department, please contact me or contact town hall and they can, they can give my number out to them and get ahold of me. Station reported last month. I'm still looking for grants. I contacted our wonderful senators to see if there was any funding out there. Of course, I didn't expect any, any company update from them, which I never got. So that's our federal government force. The assistance to the firefighter grant is going to be coming up for this fall. It's one of the largest grants for the fire fire departments nationwide. Although they are looking to cut the funding to that grant this year and for the future. So we're going to meet with the officer to sit down and see what we can do to apply for this grant. It's a very competitive grant. There's over 20,000 fire departments apply for this grant. And there's only certain things you can apply for. So and we've got it three times in the past. So we didn't apply the last couple of years. So hopefully we can apply again and maybe have some better luck. So. And then we'll be planning for fire prevention, which is in October. So this is around the corner. So we'll be planning our fire prevention in the schools and what else we're going to do. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Next up is the airport.
I've got a few things. There's a flying coming up next weekend, the 15th through the 17th, the flying camp out. We have a pancake breakfast on Saturday morning. And we're going to do a poke around, around the local airports. That's the good news I've got. On the other side, there was an accident on the airport back in March when they damaged the control box of the semi. We're still waiting for payment for that. Been contacting them about every month or so. And I haven't gotten any responses. What I'd like to do is send it on to Adam and let him send a command letter to him. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I saw the MVA airport. Oh, okay.
Oh, that's another one. That's coming up next week. Do you have any thoughts about that? Could you send it to Adam for a command letter? Are we going to do that? Another one, there was an incident last week with an aircraft that hit the hangar on both sides. I've got J and J coming out. They were the ones that skinned it last time to give us an S amount of damages. Unfortunately, the pilot wasn't insured. So I just talked to Chris about that, what to do with that. So we'll deal with that here in the next couple of weeks.
And has that satisfied your course?
Sort of. I got to go through it with them because there's some, there's some issues because they built the original property, the buildings on it, and are kind of in bad shape right now. So I would like them to correct those issues. I'd like that stated in the contract. So.
All right, before our wastewater treatment plant, I'm working with businesses and some residences out on the west side. Here's a try on, tie onto our wastewater system out there. Our lift station out there has not been used since the trailer port was removed out there a couple of years ago. So I'm trying to get that up and going again. We do have one resident that's on it and one business that's going to try to tie on to it. A little business that's interested in getting on there. So that's, that will be good to get that going again. We have had some issues with some of our controlling equipment down at the wastewater treatment plant. And we've called in George Booth Company to look at that. They've been looking at the equipment at the wastewater treatment plant and also the water department for the towers and the pumps as well. Fortunately with the water system, it's a pretty universal generic system. So finding parts or anything for that's going to be really easy. Unfortunately, the SCADA equipment we just installed in 2019, that company has been bought out by another company and their tech service is basically gone now. And so we're trying to figure out different routes of getting some attention down there for the SCADA system.
So when the company, when SCADA was bought out, they just kind of eliminated?
Pretty much, yeah. They still have a number. You can call for tech service, but you know, they refer you on to someone else and say that this isn't their problem or, you know, that kind of thing. So we're going to, George Booth Company is going to try to figure out how we can navigate through that though. We've, water department, we had some spots where we had leaks that has been repaved now. Our water department is purchasing some new leak detection equipment. It's around just under $4,000 for that, which we need of that. Electric department, been doing some tree trimming, installed a new residential service on Lacy Road. We have had some power outages. We had a truck that wrecked into some lines on South Washington Street. And we've also had some other tree-related outages. Streets department, Eric's been working on installing the new tribute signs that we have up for Ralph Teeter, Rhea Abbott, Dr. Miller, Ruth Dutro, and Gadi Wilmer. So we've got those installed. Received a lot of good comments and compliments on those. I presented back at the last meeting about buying a crack seal pop for sealing our streets. I do have a quote there, an updated quote for $50,000 for a seal master machine. I think you pretty much agreed by consensus to purchase a new machine at our last meeting, but you did want to see a firm quote on a particular item. So that's there. I don't know if it's right at $50,000, I think out. I think Adam said if it's over 50, he would rather you vote on it. If it's right at 50, I don't, you know, probably, you still need to vote on it.
And they are the only company with what's...
They're the only company, yeah, they're the only company that has that piece of equipment. And Julie and I discussed what funds that would come out of. I think we split it between NVA and regular streets, right?
Yeah.
Probably 50/50, if we're splitting it.
But you would like us to approve $50,000 for your crack seal?
Correct.
And it's exactly $50,000.
It is exactly $50,000. It was $15,500, so it's dropped $1,500.
Is that a new one?
It is used. It has like 1,800. So that will help us maintain our streets. We have been getting only like nine or 10 years out of each of our streets, and I would really like to get that up to like 15 years, as expensive as streets are now to repave. It's just over the last 10 years, like twice as much as what it used to be to repave. I mean, it's extremely expensive.
We were, I was thinking the other day after your comment on the last meeting that North Market there next to the fire station was pretty bad.
Yeah.
And I was just thinking, that's, I mean, that's the route that we take out of town and swings down to North Market to Perry House. I mean, that route, it gets a lot of the heavy traffic from our...
It does, and you can kind of see where it's all breaking apart and grass going through.
So maybe, I don't know, that's like in the future, if they came and repaved it, then there's a way to...
It probably needs to be thicker, heavy-duty asphalt right there, doesn't it?
Might have consideration.
It is definitely something to consider.
Since it's used, does it come with any type of warranty at all, or is there anything that comes with this?
It does not. It's a fairly simple piece of equipment. Seal Master does service them.
Will they provide any training with this, or is there...
We've used, we've used them before, yeah. They do provide training. We've had them train our other former employees.
It's as much like the ones you rented in the past.
Yeah, correct, yeah. You know, they have a receipt in there from, I had Julie add up, just from 2020, we spent $14,000 just on renting one in 2020, so, yeah.
It won't take long, then.
It won't take long to pay itself back. And I think also, like I had said at the last meeting, having one in-house, we'll be able to use it a day or two here, and then if it rains, or we don't employ us to staff it or whatever, we can, you know, we'll be able to use it intermittently rather than having to try to use it all at the same time when we've rented in the past.
ARPA funds for this too?
No, no. We were beginning to use them. Unless you want it.
We can take it out of, like, three different, NVA restricted, NVA and local road and street.
Restricted, right.
It'd be three different ones, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion that will approve Chris's purchase of the crack sealing machine for $50,000 to be paid for from three different NVA funds? All those in favor?
Aye.
I would need the motion for it, sorry.
I'll make the motion. Second.
We approve Chris's purchase of the crack sealing machine for $50,000 being paid for from funds from the NVA. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then the other, only other things I am working, trying to find a new location for an LED sign, which I would like to, an information sign, which I'd like to replace our old one before the eclipse, because I think, you know, when we're having all these visitors from out of town, it'd be good to have something where we can have information posted. So I'm working on trying to find a new location for that. The only other thing I had was that my group of everyone else has said that Jubilee Days was really successful. Mayor Martinez, I think, had a really good time here in Hagerstown, Indiana, and I really appreciate everyone that helped out with that, so.
I truly, truly, truly enjoyed the mayor.
Very neat, very neat person, very neat person.
She is. Very nice. Julie, have anything else? Is there any more miscellaneous business? Okay, our next regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 2nd at 6:30. And has everyone had a chance to read claims?
Move to approve. Second.
Move to second it, that we approve claims. Have some of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adjournment?
Sub move. Second.
We moved to second it, that we had turned all of them in favor?
Aye.
Post.